Come on, I'm being nice to you.
Good evening and welcome to the Monday, July 12 Muscatine School District Board of Education Meeting. Madam Secretary, can you please help us determine the quorum?
Present.
Here.
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 Thank you. Tonight, Ms. Peterson's second grade class at McKinley Elementary School will lead us in the pledge. Please stand. Thank you to Ms. Peterson's second grade class at McKinley Elementary. Next item is Citizen Speaks. If anyone in the audience wants to address the board, please step to the podium, state your name and address. You will have three minutes to address the board. Per board policy, we cannot get engaged in any discussion. And I assume here looking at the audience, no one is here to address beside, you know, the regular people that we have from the school district. With that, we move to the board targets, goals report, and I would like to go over the three items that we have every month on our agenda. Item A, students will graduate prepared for post-secondary options. Item B, Muscatine Schools will utilize resources effectively and equitably. And item C, students will learn in a positive and supportive environment. And under this item, we have summer learning updates. So with that, Clint, I will turn it to you.
Turn it over to Joel.
Thank you.
Okay, I was just going to give a brief update on summer school. So our goal this summer was to address the learning loss that students experienced due to COVID. So at the high school, June 7 through July 1, a summer program was held with seven teachers and 10 different courses were offered. We had 87 students who participated this summer and 105 credits were earned. And as kids finish up their coursework, we expect that to go up. At Susan Clark Junior High, June 7 through July 1 were the dates that the program was held. 25 students participated, and the focus was on ELA and math. At the elementary level, we are currently in summer school at this time, so it started on June 28 and will end on July 30. We have 351 students that are participating in that program. The students participated in academics that focused on reading, math, and writing. And in the afternoon, students were involved in enrichment courses taught by teachers and community groups that partnered with our district. So overall, we were able to serve 463 students in our summer programming. And we are going to conclude with a short video from Spark from our elementary program. We are not going to conclude with a short video. So do you have any questions regarding the summer program?
I think you will. If there's no question, I would like also to thank you and thank everybody who took some sort of position here to help all these students during the summer program. 463 students is really a big number, so thank you for doing that.
Yeah. And I just wanted to say briefly, I don't want to name every community program because I know I'll forget somebody, but we did have a lot of our community partners helping in our summer program. And it's just been a really great experience to go to the elementary and see all the kids participating in lots of different things in our community. So.
And I would just like to say, I think it has been a great program. And again, the focus really on trying to close some of those learning gaps, but really, it's setting the framework for the summer program that we want moving forward as well. That focuses on academics, but also on enrichment activities. It's for all kids. Kids are coming into the building every day as excited as possible, right? They do that academic work, and then they spend the afternoons. Again, all kinds of activities, including our public library has been working with kindergarten on bridges and different local bridges, and they worked on bridge building. And you've got kindergarten kids thinking about how to make their bridge safer, safety features, traffic patterns. And again, this is for our kindergarten students. And so it's those kind of opportunities for our kids that will really continue to move the needle for us and something we want to continue to promote and grow as we move forward. So just kudos to all of our staff and community partners who've been working on that program. So we're really excited about that.
Anybody would like to add anything? Thank you, Joel, and thank you, Clint. Next on our agenda action, possible action, the following items are considered to be routine by the Board of Education and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a director saw requests, in which event the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered in its normal sequence from the agenda. The items are minutes, bills and claims, employment recommendations, and board policy. What are the wishes of the board?
I'll make the motion to approve the consent agenda items.
Do we have second?
I'll second.
Thank you. We have a motion and we have a second. Any discussion? Okay. All those in favor of the consent agenda, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Okay, motion carry. Thank you. We move into next item on our agenda. And the item will be to approve the advertising equipment contract with Varsity Group in the amount of $174,490. What are the wishes of the board? Do we have a presentation first? Okay, I'm sorry. Let's.
Thank you, everyone. What Tony and I would like to do this evening is to present some both background information and then additional information in regards to the proposed advertising contract with Varsity Group, which is a continuation of an advertising contract, but then it's a little different this time around as well because we're potentially working with them to provide new scoreboards for the stadium and then also the gymnasium as well. Just a little bit of background, some of you may be very familiar with this, or you may not be as familiar with this. Basically, our basic premise from the stadium renovation plan was that the field surface and a new scoreboard, a video board, would need to be privately fundraised for. We were very thankful. We were able to receive a $1 million grant from the Roy J. Carver Charitable Trust to support the stadium renovation plan. Grant money would provide for turf installation on the field. Leftover turf funds are able to support renovation projects, additional renovation parts of the stadium project. The current stadium scoreboard is its original scoreboard from 1985, the stadium opening. So we needed to raise money to install a new scoreboard with a video board as well. Our gymnasium scoreboards were also installed in about the mid-1990s. We've been fortunate that both were, all were continuing to work well, but we reached a point, due to their age, where replacement parts and continued service will become difficult very soon. Indoor and outdoor scoreboards contain permanent advertising from original scoreboard sponsorships, whatever that looked like at the time. But they also have, both have Varsity Group advertising from the 2016 Varsity Group advertising contract. So the picture that was on the slide, that's what the current LED board from approximately five years ago looks like underneath our large indoor scoreboard. And we've also worked with Varsity Group since 2004, so we have a longstanding working relationship with them. In working together as a scoreboard planning committee, myself, Tony, Chuck Van Heck, and Joey Krieger, we did brainstorming on possible methods to fund our scoreboard project, which evolved over time actually as well. Our basic plan became to seek out community partners and to promote to them a 10-year advertising plan so they'd have permanent advertising space for a sponsorship in our scoreboard plan. So these are, on the slide is the list of the six sponsors right now that have said yes, and the amount that they've committed to. There are seven advertising spots on the outdoor scoreboard, and then four potentially on the indoor scoreboard. Our indoor and outdoor scoreboard plan was to secure advertising sponsorships, 10 years of advertising for our sponsors. Spectators are in the gym or the stadium, they see the advertising. We ended up with a payment plan option. What we looked at, some of our potential sponsors asked the question, could we pay this in multiple payments? So could we do more than just one lump sum of a payment? I spoke to Tom Anderson to see if that was a possibility, to do two payments. He was in agreement that we could do two, like one upfront, one right away, and then one would be payable July 1 of 2022. So if a business chose to, they could support us that way. We'd extend the current Varsity Group advertising contract for five years. We've been working with Varsity Group since, I said before, since 2004. And then after, once all of that was approved, we would be able to issue a purchase order for gymnasium and stadium, scoreboard and video boards. Benefits of our plan, the outside, the stadium scoreboard and video board came to a cost of approximately $175,000, working with Varsity Group. Comparable stadium scoreboard models that we looked at were quoted roughly $198,000 and $204,000, two different versions. Another vendor had an estimated initial price that was higher than that. These numbers do include a new sound system, which is a need for the stadium, and they include installation. Also, originally, we didn't start out the process seeking to do gymnasium scoreboards at this time, but because of what a partnership with Varsity Group was able to offer, it was going to be approximately $48,000 for a new larger video board, but then also a replacement large scoreboard that has the side panels, like we currently have on the one end of the gym, and then a replacement scoreboard on the opposite end as well. Our event workers would be able to control video boards on game nights to promote our student athletes and whatever the event is that's happening. And our Varsity Group advertisers, those advertisers, advertisements will be cycling through as well. Varsity Group would continue to sell advertising for MHS, with MHS receiving 50% of the revenue after upkeep costs. This is the same arrangement that has been in place for the past contract. This past school year, 2021, was year five of a six-year contract. And one of the benefits of this plan as well was the fact that Varsity Group would continue to basically sell, go out, sell advertising to both our local businesses and local people that wanted to buy advertising, but they also reach out to other businesses, colleges, places that we wouldn't normally be tapping into for advertising revenue as well, and then keeping track of that, working on marketing and the digital ad formatting as well. As I said, the stadium scoreboard and video board was approximately $175,000, working with Varsity Group. Nevco, we had an initial quote, which, two different models, $198,000 approximately, and $203,000, $204,000 approximately. At one point, we had a gymnasium scoreboard quote, which was a little, a couple of years ago, actually, so it's a little old, but OES was the vendor on that, and that was around $106,000. So there was a significant, as we were looking at this. And these weren't honestly true finalized quotes from these other vendors as well, because we weren't seeking those at that point, but we had a comparison point for this process at the time. Another plus, is that MHS would continue to generate advertising revenue and technical support from Varsity Group, as opposed to creating our own plan for capturing advertising revenue from ads, which is only as good as the effort and the time that you can put into that as well. What we hope to accomplish tonight, we hope for approval, which would then, upon approval, we could do a purchase order and then place orders as well. The picture that's up on this slide, that is from, that's the video board, the video board that we would be doing, that's from Columbus Junction's gym, actually. That scoreboard is similar to the opposite end from the video board scoreboard that we would do. These are renderings and kind of what the model looks like for, like what we set out to as we talked to potential advertisers and sponsors. Seven total panels on the outside in the stadium, and then four panels on the, around the video board on the inside in the gymnasium. So. So that's the recommendation, is to hopefully get that approval so that we can move forward. And we definitely can answer any questions if you may have any. And thank you for letting us present.
Thank you. Anybody have any question?
So with the approval of this, when would this scoreboard be installed?
In talking to, in talking to our representatives from the Varsity Group, with 10 to 12 weeks is what the lead time is for the scoreboard and video board, the scope of outside. So we were looking at, well, we were looking at if we would have started right at the beginning of July, if we would have had approval, we would have been getting everything, if everything had gone well, like right at the beginning of September, which, that's crossing your fingers on a lot of things. So right now, for outside, approximately beginning of October is when the products would be in, and we'd be able to do installation during a two-week window when we're on the road for football. So they'd have enough time to do it, and then it would be in place for weeks eight and nine, when we play at home the last two weeks of the football season. I talked to Varsity Group as well today, asking them, would the gymnasium be on the same type of timeline? And the initial response, that could, that could come quicker because it's a smaller scoreboard system and video system, but I would probably just realistically plan on the same timeline as the outside. So we weren't hoping for early September, and then we're just disappointed when it doesn't come as fast.
Okay, with, with that being said, have our partners been notified of that?
Yes. So I've been in touch with all of the sponsors, and they are all well aware. And everybody's said that they're with us and to just keep them updated. We've had several conversations with all of the sponsors along the way. Some have jumped on board, you know, with the notion a couple of months ago. And given the relationships that we have, the communication is, is very fluid. So nobody's surprised by any type of, you know, delay in the process. And the ultimate goal is to have everybody for a big dedication ceremony once things are ready to roll. And we've expressed that to them. So again, that has been, I feel strongly about making sure that we've all been on the same page. And as soon as we realized we'd be here this evening presenting, we made sure that we communicated that to them.
So did you reach out to them personally or electronically?
Yes. So some are easier to get ahold of via email than others, you know. Admittedly, I did not have any personal rapport with the representative from HNI, so we did connect via email. And then I had a great chat with her on the phone, but everybody else I certainly have known for several years and have had continuous communication with them on this process, so.
And they're all, they're all okay with everything?
Absolutely. Yep. They're just hoping that we get the yes so they can start cutting checks, so.
And their contribution is a 10-year contribution. It's a one-time, it's $25,000 or $37.5 for 10 years, so $2,500 a year, basically.
Yes.
Or $37.50.
So I think it's, it's Tom, I don't know if Tom mentioned, you know, the one option, the initial option with Varsity Group was to kind of finance through them, but we decided if we could go out and get the funds from the community, we wouldn't need that, right? So by financing it through our community partners, we don't have to tap into that with Varsity Group, and then we're able to keep enjoying that 50-50 revenue split with them. But yes, to your point, Mike, it would be approval tonight, hopefully get those first checks, and then the second checks for those on the two payment plan would be due July 1, 2022. And they're all aware of that for the folks that wanted the multiple payment options.
Do you have, do you, what do you anticipate as far as revenues that you'll be generating outside of that annually after year one?
So in looking back, I was able to just look back over the last three years and to see what our typical revenue coming back. Three years ago, we had just a little over $13,000 that came back from our current contract with Varsity Group. That contract, that was year three of the first three years of that contract, there was $5,000 coming off the top right away to pay for the LED board that they had put in the gymnasium, and then the updated version that they had put under the scoreboard. So last year, the 1920 school year was the first year that $5,000 was off the table, and we did $15,621. This year, year five, was down a little bit, and I talked to them, it was $11,182. I talked to our Varsity Group rep, and a lot of that related to, they had a harder time selling advertising with the effects of COVID, as they went out to talk to businesses, as all of you are aware and have lived through it as well over the last 18 months. So what I would anticipate, what I think would probably be pretty realistic, I think we'd probably easily, we should be easily in that $15,000 range annually. I mean, there's no guarantee, but we have an updated platform that we're able to, or that Varsity Group is able to market to their sponsors, or the people that they're selling advertising to. We know, as in looking at the scoreboard project, I mean, we will also have, like out at the stadium, for example, and they'll be able to communicate this, when there are little kids' football games, when there are junior high track meets, when there are high school track meets, we'll be able to turn, we'll turn that on. So advertisers, their message is coming through as well. It's just scrolling, just like we do in the gymnasium all the time. So I think the, the potential is, is good for a continued increase.
So, Tom, can you go back to the cost comparison to the other two vendors real quick then?
Sure.
Did we take the, that's, it's $15,000 for the gymnasium right now, right? That's what you were saying, was about $15,000? Or do you think that's going to be the football and the gymnasium combined?
That, that number, like the numbers that I quoted, that was what our check for, it was both the outside and the inside. So that was the approximate dollar amount for inside and outside.
So if you look at Varsity Group getting another, they get 15, if, let's just say the average is $15,000 for five years, right? Then it's $75,000 to us and $75,000 to them.
So the $15,000 would be our 50%, so they would be, they'd be having to sell advertising at about 30,000 to 35,000.
But.
To answer your question, yes.
But they're, they're getting, if we're getting 15, they're getting 15, I think we're splitting profits, right?
That's correct.
So there's $75,000 of revenue that they're getting in addition to that $175,000, right?
We're actually, I hate to interrupt, but theirs is net, right? It's after they've already taken out all their expenses to create anything. So it's actually, they probably get a closer to a 60-40 cut than 50-50 cut.
Yeah. 60-40, 50-50, I, would just, when you put it up there against those comparisons then, right, they're a little more equal. But we would have to hire someone, right, to sell the advertising and sort of manage that, right? But there, there is a little bit more revenue going to them on top of what's up there to, in that comparison. And then I just had one other, on the contract on term 12, it shows the costs valid through June 30 of this year, which we've already passed, so.
So one of the things, and I'm not 100% sure, as this, like June 30 of 2021, is that the number that you're quoting?
That's what it says, yeah.
Okay. Since, as we've worked through the process and, and I talked to them about when we'd be able to start, that that's a date that has changed on the contract. So now it runs from like July, basically July 2021 through June 30, 2026 is now the updated dates. Because I had to ask them, okay, the dates are a little out of whack now. So I think what went, what went out today probably had the updated dates in it. I'm not sure.
This, this just says the price increases are only guaranteed until, or the prices above are only guaranteed till June 30. And if it's after that, it may go up. So.
Aaron, I think to your point, and that's a good point, and we'll go back and, before John signs anything officially, we'll make sure that date is updated. The approval is for a specific amount, the 174. So I think from a board standpoint, you're protected there, because what you're approving is that full amount as it's shown. And if they did something different, it would cause us to have to come back to you. But we'll make, and I don't think that was Varsity Group's intent.
No, no.
They've had some people out too, so we'll get that cleaned up and make sure it's reflected.
And I was, I was planning to ask the same question, like, because I have it in front of me, that term, item 12. So that's, like, if we can perhaps maybe later on amend that contract, because, you know, it is very clear that this might change or subject to change after that. Any other question? Any other question? No? Well, thank you, Tom and Tony, for, for the presentation. Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate that. What are the wishes of the board?
I move that we approve the advertising equipment contract with Varsity Group in the amount of $174,490, please.
I'll second.
So we have a motion and a second. All those of you in favor of approving the contract with Varsity Group in the amount of $174,490, please signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose? Okay, thank you. Motion carry. We move to next item. Next item is to approve transferring funds held by the Muscatine Community School District for the Jefferson School Culture Fair Scholarship Fund to the community foundations of greater Muscatine via agreement between MCSD and CFGM. Clint, would you like to, or Tom?
Sure.
Would you like to talk about that?
So this was funds held in our school's scholarship trust fund. If you remember, last month, we transferred the rolling scholarship. So I got paperwork together, or I should say, the community foundation got paperwork together for this other scholarship, which is much smaller, but yet it's, needs to be transferred to them taking ownership of it now, so.
So it's basically Tom moving that amount
Yeah.
back to the foundation so that we have all the money and the funds in one place?
Right, correct.
Thank you.
Yep.
What are the wishes of the board?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All the, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Okay, motion carry.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next item is to approve the purchase of one operations truck from Krieger Auto Group for $29,979, and the purchase of two activity vans from InserFord for the total of $71,624 for a total price for both purchases. for a total price for both purchases of $101,603. Any question or?
Are these, are these two vans, are they replacing vans or are they additional to our fleet or?
So currently we have two vans that have over 100,000 miles, so they would be replacing those activity vans. The, the operations truck is slated to replace our Jeep for plowing sidewalks. You know, it's 2000, it's a 2006 Jeep, it's rather rusty. So this would be to, to kind of replace that on, on, as our fleet.
Do these look like they're going to be, or do we have to order these or they?
Yeah, so it is, part of the issue is that with, with everything is there's a major chip shortage right now with automotive, with automotive stuff. So as I look at this, the operations truck from Krieger's, we're looking at about 12 weeks out for that. Minser was like November build, so we'd be looking at January at the earliest. With the activity vans, Krieger's was like in December to January build. Minser says they can get in about 90 to 120 days, plus they're cheaper, so.
Any other question? Thank you. What are the wishes of the board?
I'll make the motion to approve the purchase of the truck, operations truck from Krieger's for a cost of $29,979 and the purchase of two activity vans from Minser Ford for a total of $71,624 and for a total price of $101,603.
Thank you. Any second?
I'll second.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. All those in favor of this motion, please signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose? Okay, motion carry. Thank you. We move to next item, which is the third and final reading on changes to policy 703.1 and two administrative regulations, 703.1 R1 and 703.1 R2. Any question or do we have a motion to approve the third reading?
I'll approve.
I'll second.
Second, thank you. All those of you in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Okay, motion carry. With that, we move to discussion and information. And the first item under that is a second reading on policy. And as we see on our agenda tonight, we have 14 different policies listed as a second reading. Obviously, you know, we get one more chance to look at those 14 policies and share any edits, suggestions, recommendations. And please send that to Lisa. And I expect by next month, we will have the third and final reading for the following, the following policies. So with that, if there was no question, I would like to move to the May 2021 financials. And we'll go back to you, Tom.
Sure.
For that, please. Thank you.
So presented tonight are May financials. And don't let the calendar on the first page mislead you. We are very busy in our finance department in the summertime. And, you know, we'll be presenting June, a preliminary June next month and then kind of the final financial report the following month after that. So that calendar is there before you for future reference. The May deposit balances are on, on the second page. And this is just showing our reconciliation in May 31st compared to the month before. The next page is our revenue and expenses summary for through May 31st. We'll just point out that in May, we did receive the $1 million donation in Pebble, our physical plant and equipment levy, Fund 36, from the Roy J. Carver Charitable Trust. So that was received in the month of May. And as far as our fund balances go, no red flags how any of our funds are, are doing through May. June will look a lot different because as you know, June is the month where we capture June, July and August teacher salary and benefits. So there's like three months worth of expense are going to hit our books when I report out next month. So this will look a little bit different. The next page is our, comparing our, our actual expenses through May compared to our, our budget. Now, May was the month that we amended our budget, so that is in the second to right-hand column. Now we're going to compare our actual total, our actual expenses to that amended budget. So again, next month, that's going to look a lot different because of closing out our fiscal year. The final two pages are general fund revenue and expenses for the month of, or through the month of May. And really, again, I don't have a lot of red flags through May. And we're about this percentage-wise receiving our revenue and have spent our expenditures compared to our budget, so. That's it.
Thank you, Tom. Any question for Tom?
Thank you.
Thank you. Here, our next item on our agenda is the board development. If, if you remember last month, the board president, Tammy Drova, started that discussion. We started to use 10 to 15 minutes of our board meeting to have some discussions around whose job is it? Talking about management versus board governors and, and talking about the difference between the two. So we are continuing this tonight also, talking about the same thing around the board table discussion, tools and so on. And I want to remind everybody, also our audience, that we as a board of education, learning and education are very important for us. So that's what we do. I mean, we, we try also to tackle different issues, talk about different issues, learn from each other and discuss different, different issues such as what we are going to be doing tonight. So I would like to have 10 to 15 minutes. We do have basically many scenarios in, for tonight. But basically, if I remember right, we talk about scenario one and two. Just to look at scenario one and two and have some discussion about each one of them. So the goals for our time together is number one, consideration of scenario and determination of whose job is it? The number two is the consideration of same scenarios and determination of what role the whole board will play in this situation. And the third, determining indicators of micromanagement. So please keep these three items in handy in front of you as we start looking at scenario one and have the discussion and then move into scenario number two. So we'll go with, with this, whose job is it? And what's the board's role in each scenario? That's basically what we have. So I'll give you a minute maybe or two, those scenarios are not that long anyway. Perhaps we start with scenario number one. And if you want to have a minute or two to look at it and feel free to start the discussion. Would you want me to read that scenario for the audience or any of you? I mean, I'm, I'm okay if any of you would like to read, it's fine, so I don't need to be the only one who reads. But if not, I can, I can read if you, do you want me, okay. Scenario one, Dreamfield School District has made funds available for the purchase of one-to-one laptops for the middle school. The decision will now need to be made regarding whether funds will be invested in laptops, notebooks or tablets. One of the board members is an IT specialist for a major company. Whose job is it to ensure the correct information is made available to inform this, this decision? And please feel free.
It'd probably be the, I would, I would assume it's the superintendent's and the, and the IT department's job to, to do that. And, and it'd kind of be out of our lane, you know, for this IT specialist who's also a board member. It's out of his lane to, to, to interact in, in any of the conversations about that.
And for me, it's a little loose. Was the, the funds that are available, was that approved? Does that mean the board approved those funds and then the decision was how those funds were going to, going to be spent? Is that how you interpret that? Because it just said the school district was making funds available.
The district has made funds available, so that, to me, that says the board has already decided to dedicate dollars to that or approved a budget that includes an item for that.
Yeah.
And the question is how specifically will that go? Will it be towards a laptop, towards a, a notebook, Chromebook or a tablet?
And the way we've done it here is that the assets themselves are brought to us for approval with the amount. So it's not, we just approve a million dollars and then it goes and gets decisions. But it's, we had, we looked at notebooks, we looked at laptops, we looked at, you know, Chromebooks or whatever. And this is the decision we're making, do you approve? So it's different than the way we normally do it. But I think I get what they're saying, which is it's not the board's decision, it's the IT department's decision, the superintendent's.
Again, I, I would agree with that. I think it's our, our job from an administration standpoint to come to you with a recommendation based on what we've looked at. You know, as we looked at laptops, costs, replacement, you know, maintenance, all those things, notebooks and tablets, here's our recommendation. And then the question is whose job is to ensure correct information? And it's our job to get that information, but also to make sure we're, we're in conversation with you to say, what do you need to help make this decision, right? And what are we, what are we missing? So that we can make sure that when you make a decision, you know exactly what you're making decision on.
I do believe though that the person who would be the IT specialist at least would have a good insight to, you know, what are the questions, you know, that may need to be asked on it once that information is all presented.
I think they also have to worry about a possible conflict of interest though. So if they're trying to buy from that, the company that they represent, then that person probably needs to step back.
And that's a good point, Mike. I, I mean, if, if that IT, the board member who is an IT specialist working for one of those companies that perhaps decided to bid on that, so definitely that becomes a major issue for that board. Yeah, thanks. That's, that's a good point to bring, yeah. Any other things? And, and, and the, the way I see those scenarios are really, I see them as great scenarios that creates more communication between the board and the management working together and leads to both sides working together. And, and that's very, very important. Any other points about the first scenario? Mike, can I ask you please to read the scenario number two? I, I'd like people to be part of that too. I don't want to be just reading.
I would love to read this.
And we know Mike likes to talk.
Yeah, so. You know, we'll have fun, right? Well, having fun.
Betty Smith approaches board member Birdie with a request. She believes her daughter is not being treated fairly by her softball coach, who is also her math teacher. Betty wants to sit, have, wants to sit down and have a heart-to-heart talk with the coach just to get things out in the open. However, she really wants a witness with some authority to be part of the conversation. She would like Birdie as a board member for her director to, for her director district to be the person. Whose job is it to help Mrs. Smith get a full and fair hearing from the coach?
Thank you, Mike.
You're welcome.
So what, what do you think?
Well, if a board member was in the, in that meeting, that'd be out of the chain of command. I would think that Tom would be the AD, would be in the, would be in the meeting with the coach and the parent.
By our policy, you always want to be the, we want people that are closest to the situation to start with that. So if it's just, if it's not just directly with the softball coach and she wants somebody else, then it would be Tom and the softball coach's most immediate supervisor, which would be Tom in this case. I agree with Danny 100%.
I agree, but at the same time, just from the, the, the parent standpoint of it, needs to be able to be communicated properly to, to her that, why that is so. Because the, the parent is emotional enough that they're just worried about wanting a witness, you know, somebody else, you know, there and everything. And, uh, which is nothing wrong with having, you know, someone there perhaps with her that feel comfortable, but just not as an board member that's out of that chain of command.
Anybody else? So it's, it's more like I see it as, as you said, like a straightforward kind of scenarios that, you know, the chain of command is very clear. I, I, I do believe that the chain of command is very clear at our school district. So, so yeah, it's moving from one level to the other. I, I think it's well-defined, so, so yeah, thank you.
And I think it is an important piece too, to help the parent understand that process, to listen and be fully present for that, that listening piece. And, and there's an opportunity to follow up. I think the interesting piece of how this is phrased is, is the, the parent wants some authority. And it, it reminds me of our conversation with Dennis Cheesebro as we talked about governance and some of those roles. And, and the reality of, as a school board, the only time you have authority is when you sit at this table with at least three other people, right? And that's another good opportunity to help, you know, communicate that to the community and, and to individuals. But you still, we have to listen and, and follow up.
Thank you. And, and I, I would just say it goes, you know, it can go two to three levels of authority up if the parent doesn't feel like they're getting what they need.
Sure.
Right, from not only the, you know, boss of the coach, but also the principal of the teacher and on up to you, basically, the superintendent.
Correct.
Anything else? And, and perhaps maybe I failed to mention in the beginning of this meeting, people, especially the audience at home, maybe they are seeing me tonight instead of Tammy conducting this meeting. The reason why is because our president, Tammy Drova, is out of the area tonight. So as a vice president, it's my job to take her place when she's not around. So I thought perhaps maybe I will mention that before we continue with the agenda. Our next item on the agenda is the announcements, meetings and events. July 28th, 2021, we have a strategic planning session at 5:30 PM at the Administrative Center. And August 9th, 2021, next month, our regular board meeting at 7:00 PM here at the City Hall. Anybody have any other announcement to add to this?
Yeah, John, just a quick update as well. Our next food distribution will be on August 10th. So I just want to say thank you to Laura Cook and Jeff Keith, who have provided years of dedication and, and service to that, helping to coordinate that program. And as they step away, Lisa and I are trying to get our arms around that. There's a lot involved with that. We've had a chance to meet with Laura and also with the food pantry for July. And typically our numbers in July are, are significantly lower than they are during the school year. So that's being handled out in the community and the food pantry is working on that. But it'll be back here in August for us. We do, as we've had that conversation, I think there's, it's been some good opportunity for some clarification that as we move forward, we, in the past, we've served just families of students in the district. We can actually, in conversation with the, the food pantry, who's been in direct contact with the donor who provides this, the funding for this, we can really serve anyone in the community, which starts to really open that up because we hate to turn people away as they're in need. There's been some conversation about whether we do the, previous years, we had them come into the district office with a shopping cart. Over the last year, due to COVID, we've had a, a drive-up model. Our conversation with the food pantry is we'd really like to continue. that kind of drive-up model. And that's, I, I, we just need fewer volunteers to do that, right? And so we've had some good conversations about that and how we can still do that and work with the food pantry on that. The other positive of that drive-up process is that then we can incorporate our students at the high school as a kind of a job function for some of our higher-needs special ed students to come in and actually pack the boxes. So it becomes a skilled activity for them. That, again, so the, the two things kind of work together. So it's a process we'd like to continue doing. And the food pantry is, is supportive of that. So look for more information on that. But we'll be back at the district location on, on August 10.
Thank you for the update, Clint. Any question for Clint?
Can we, at the next meeting, or get an update on the stadium project? How that, or can we do that, I don't know if we can do that now or not?
Ryan just walked out.
We just walked out? No. I thought I saw him back there. But maybe get that on the next agenda and kind of, you know, I, I don't know if anybody's been back there, but I've been, I've been.
We'll need to put that on the agenda so we can do that.
Yeah, I've been through there and it looks, you guys should drive back there to see the progress of it. It's pretty impressive. So I think we need to have an update.
Well, we'll put it on, as an agenda item, I can tell you that, you know, right now we're, we're on track with the stadium. We're running into some rain issues on the, on the turf. They're working on the drainage right now, but it's kind of a swamp. So we need to go back to the hot, dry, you know, July and August to, to get some of that done. But we'll make sure we, we put an item on there to address that at the next meeting.
Thank you. Thanks. Any other item? The other item, do we have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make the motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
Thank you. All those in favor of this motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Thank you. Thank you, motion carry. Thank you, everybody, those of you who are here in the chamber, and to all our audience. Good night.